I didn't have this one for my chair of career.
Are you traveling this weekend? Where are you going? And then when are you back? You are an animal. Have your eyes on some deep dish pizza? Ready? If I haven't gavelled yet. We will call the meeting into order, please. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's make a motion to approve the minutes, Planning Commission, October 18th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 18th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting minutes.
A second to the motion?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we'll move on to November 18th, Special Planning Commission minutes. Make a motion to approve those.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The packet is awful big, Erin. Um, the last of the minutes to approve. August 15th, 2018, Joint Session 2040 Comp Plan. Make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 15th, 2018 Joint Session Meeting.
Second to the motion?
I'm just looking at something real quick. Okay, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries? Okay, moving on to item number four, Hawthorne Ridge. Erin?
Sure, thank you.
Show us your...
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, tonight we are reviewing rezoning and preliminary plat for Hawthorne Ridge, also known as the Ellen Redman property, or the old llama farm in town. So, a little bit of history of where we're at in the process right now. The Planning Commission reviewed our concept plan on June 21st, the City Council on July 2nd. So, we are at the preliminary plat phase of the development. So, tonight it's preliminary plat and rezoning, anticipated to go to the City Council December 17th. It will come back to you for final plat at a date to be determined as we continue to work with the developer, and it will also go to the council again. So, tonight there is a public hearing related to the rezoning request, so we'll, I'll speak to them simultaneously, but just a quick reminder that there is a public hearing tonight. So, zooming out a little bit from the detail, the project location, it is essentially in the center of Carver right now. So, thinking about Sixth Street is the southern property line. To the west is, um, let's see, the Spring Creek neighborhood, also to the north. And then also to the south is downtown. So, it's the center of town, it's affectionately known as Snake Trail, which is the driveway that snakes up along Old Broadway. So, thinking about project location, directly in the center of town, the property has significant bluffs and mature trees on the property that I'll speak to a little bit, but there is some developable space on the property. If you'll recall, we have processed a comprehensive plan amendment for this project. So, thinking to our 2030 plan, the property is guided for medium and low density together. After this project was identified, there was a request from the developer to re-guide to low density. The Planning Commission and City Council have reviewed, it has been processed by the Met Council, so the entire property is now guided for low density, which Hawthorne Ridge will hit. So, similar to the Meridian Fields development that D.R. Horton has under construction in the city of Carver today, they are going for straight zoning again. So, this isn't super typical, but now D.R. Horton has done it twice in a row, which is nice that we don't have to do the planned residential development overlay, so it's straight R2 zoning. So, from our city code, the minimum lot area is 7,000 square feet, lot width is 60. Front yard setback 25, rear 20, insides are seven and a half. So, included in the preliminary plat is generally a typical lot design, so it will show you generally where the house is going to sit. And on each of the 81 lots that are proposed in Hawthorne Ridge, they do meet the R2 specifications. To note, the existing zoning of the property is agriculture, so thinking about it historically being used as a llama farm that worked well for that project, but with the new D.R. Horton project proposed, it does fit to the R2 and the low-density residential for the comprehensive plan. So, thinking about the preliminary plat, it's the pretty technical planning document that we review, looking at lot layout, lot design, access into the site, easements, generally how the site is going to lay out. It's usually not the pretty picture that we see, but it is the technical planning document that sets lot sizes, lot shapes, and location. So, the overall site layout, from here on out, I think that I've turned the pages of the preliminary plat just to get your bearings a little bit better, so it's looking at it the same way we saw the map. So, the top section has 60 units, the lower 21. So, thinking about the developable area, there's a pretty significant portion where the 60 units will be that's where the existing houses that will be demoed. The 21 is a bit further south from that location. And thinking about the existing neighborhoods that are there, so the site is accessed via existing residential neighborhoods, but they are platted currently to allow for the construction of streets. So, Ironwood and Aspen are in the two northern portions, which would access the 60 units, so you'll see that the streets are already stubbed. Shouldn't be too much of a surprise to people living on those stubbed streets that, yes, someday they will go through. And then also on Sunny Ridge, which is the southern portion going into the 21 lots, there is a street section that is allowed through plating that was done with that neighborhood. So, thinking about what this means for our city code and the preliminary plat information, going through some projects recently, I think we all got a pretty good idea of the types of things that the Planning Commission does review. So, this is directly from Section 4242 of the city code that lays out the things you are tasked to review as the Planning Commission related to preliminary plat. So, I won't run through all of them, but they are essentially the technical planning pieces, so proposed lot lines, minimum setbacks, erosion control measures, everything that's typically included in a full submission of construction drawings and preliminary plat plans. So, while you were looking through your information, it might have been a little bit confusing thinking about some of the lines that were on the property. So, Carver was platted very early, I think in the late 1800s, to say this is generally what the city might look like. So, the streets that were platted were recorded, and they do exist, which is interesting and something that we tend to have to tackle just doing a simple street vacation. So, you'll see on the right in the preliminary plat, you see some of those streets coming through. So, those are recorded streets that the City Council will need to vacate prior to development happening. So, no construction for Hawthorne Ridge will be permitted over these streets until there's a public hearing, and then they are formally vacated. So, if that was a little confusing and you were wondering what these crazy ghosted lots are, it was from the plat from the late 1800s. So, on the left is the general area of Hawthorne Ridge. So, thinking about where they were thinking the property might go, and now I suspect they weren't as interested in bluff protection and mature tree protection, but an interesting piece. Something else that's been really important, I think, in the development of this project is thinking about trail connections. So, we've heard from several both residents of the community, the Planning Commission and City Council, that many people use Snake Trail as a great workout. So, it's a really unique piece of property in town that people often use for hiking, running. So, thinking about this property a little bit differently and how we can integrate some unique trail features. So, on the left is the north portion of the property, which is the 60 units. And the red dotted line is a trail that will go through. So, it will enter on Ironwood, and it will be in the front yard of a couple houses and then sneak to the back to be maintained in a city outlot. And then that trail will connect to the existing driveway that's on the property, so it'll make a loop with Snake Trail. So, people will be able to access the driveway, come up all the way through Hawthorne Ridge, and have access to additional neighborhoods on top of the hill of Hawthorne Ridge. Something else that's unique and interesting about this property in the circle in the left image, there's a tot lot that's proposed, so that would be a private park, HOA-maintained, but a tot lot, so a small playground area that residents of the development would be able to use. Something else to note beyond the trail, there's also a proposed sidewalk. So, on the right image, the green dash line is the sidewalk. So, this development will have a mix both of trail and sidewalk to lead to greater walkability of the development.
City Planner Smith, I have a question, the tot lot? So, would I be looking on the left, the circle in red? Thank you.
Sure. And then in the southern portion, so those are both in the north, this is the southern sidewalk plan, so still allowing the southern portion to have access to walkability with a proposed sidewalk for the development. So, something that's really interesting about this property is the excess land. So, thinking about the development and where it sits, there's a lot of property that is bluff, steep slope, and something that's really important to the community. So, through development of this project, we've heard from a lot of people that know a lot of really great history about this project, which has been exciting, and we've learned a lot. At a staff level and a council level, we've been able to spend some time on the property as well just to get to know it a little bit and think about future park needs and what it might look like for the city. So, there is a rail bed running along the south property line. It's in really good shape, it lends itself to be a pretty accessible nature-based trail. And then the rest of the property, since it's not developable, it likely will fall to an outlot to the city. Something that I personally learned is that there is a cheese cave on the property, and we had some time to go out there and explore a little bit this summer, which was interesting, and thinking about access to the community since it's a pretty big piece of the history of the city of Carver, and several of the residents that live along the property have some really great stories about it. So, thinking about that and thinking about liability, what does it mean if the city owns property with a cave on it? All of a sudden, that's not typically something that we do. So, we had the League of Minnesota Cities come out and give us a recommendation based on the city owning the property, thinking through what it might look like if we did maintain the trail and the cheese cave. So, on the left are seven recommendations that the League of Minnesota Cities gave to us, which offers us the insurance that we use. So, the first would be to provide a walking or hiking trail to the cheese cave. Getting there right now is kind of gnarly, it's a lot of, we walked through Spring Creek, so cleaning that up a little bit, removing fallen trees. There were several trees just outside the cave entrance that you kind of had to weave through. The third was to close during wet conditions, so thinking about the site and some runoff that might occur, just keeping an eye on it to make sure it's safe. And then thinking about the cave itself, so if the cave was accessible to the public, a structural engineer should review, and lighting should be added for safety. If not accessible, if that's something we think just might be tough to manage, blocking the entrance of the cave could be something that we looked to. So, the cave is interesting where there's a pretty low entrance and then opens pretty high up, probably to a 12-foot ceiling. So, we could either block it off entirely or keep the, kind of the tunnel entrance. So, we're exploring that right now, thinking through what our public services team is capable of doing, thinking about maintenance. Next would be providing signage, so a lot of people have a general idea of where the cheese cave is, but including some wayfinding would lead to a safer route for people to find the cave. And then consider an accessible trail, so if someone that was in a wheelchair wanted to explore a little bit, consider making that trail accessible. Something else that's interesting about the site is the massive amount of trees. So, thinking about the canopy cover, so typically with a preliminary plat submission, we see a formal tree survey, so they go out and they look at every single tree on the property. But thinking about this project, that would likely be someone's full-time job for several months. So, we asked them to do as a tree survey of the developable areas and consider the canopy that would need to be removed. So, if you look at the total square feet of trees and the percentage, the removal of the canopy coverage is at 10.48 percent. So, over, just at 90 percent of the trees on the site will be maintained. So, I think that's something that's important to note through both maintaining the bluff, we also are getting a pretty big treasure in keeping 90 percent of the trees that are on the site. So, this project is proposed by D.R. Horton. Here are some of the home ideas that they're thinking for the site, so the Jordan, Redwood, and Adams. There are members from D.R. Horton in the audience today, so I suspect if you have some questions specific about home layout, home price, they would be well-suited to answer once we open up for questions, but a general idea of what the homes might look like. So, again, tonight we are considering the preliminary plat, this pretty technical planning document that lays out the site, easements, lot design, as well as the rezoning. So, rezoning from ag, from the llama farm to R2, to allow for the development of Hawthorne Ridge. With that, I will open it up for questions. Quick reminder again, I think there are some members from the public who are here for the public hearing, so just a reminder that we do have a public hearing related to this project tonight.
Okay, well, we can move to open the public hearing and take any public comments. Okay, if you could step forward. Could you come up? Sorry. I'll give you, I'll give you better instructions. Yeah, if you could come forward and give us your name and address.
My name is Lynn Flitter, I live at 1631 Hackberry Court. Uh, my backyard will be in this new subdivision. And basically, what I am trying to determine or figure out is how far into my backyard is this going to be coming? There are some markers out there, there's some ribbon that's been tied into trees. Um, I was not, I'm not the original owner of the home when it was built. Uh, my neighbor is, and I was given some information that in our backyard, we were told during the development that nothing could be planted or put into that area because it's like a wetland area. And during the summer months, it is basically full of water, so we're trying to, and there's a fence that is in the property of the, of the owner of this. And it was my understanding that he put the fence actually farther into his property. He could have come back, but he didn't want to cut trees down and stuff to put the fence in there. So, I guess I'm just trying to figure out where's the property line going to be in this new subdivision? How far into my backyard? How many trees and stuff am I going to lose in my backyard?
And then the water issue also?
Well, I'm just, I, I mean, the, the water I really don't care about. I guess where, well, the reason why I brought the water up is depending on how the land has developed, I don't want to end up creating a situation where now I have water in my backyard because of, because of runoff or, or whatever. So, um, that's just something that, that I, you know, kind of have questions about or kind of concerned about. Obviously, um, the, uh, the ravine lot in the back of our property and stuff adds value to our house. So, um, you know, if we have a canopy of trees back there, the canopy of trees is gone, and obviously, it could protect, potentially affect value or the attractiveness of possible buyers of, of my home if I chose to sell it. So, that's why I'm questioning...
Can you repeat your address again?
1631 Hackberry Court.
Okay, do you, can you?
Sure, so for reference, Ironwood is the northernmost street going into the development. Hackberry is the cul-de-sac just north of that.
Yeah. So, are we able to, I don't know if one of your slides has
We can kind of visualize it a little bit.
A little bit more detail of what the, what the new plat looks like on, near that area?
Can you describe the fence more? I think I might have an idea. Is it more of just post with barbed wire, or is it a privacy fence? Describe the fence.
It's a, it's a, like a chain link fence that, I think, I guess I've not been on the property, but I know that it runs behind my house, um, my neighbor's house, and the house that's on the corner of Ironwood. It runs along our backyards, it goes back into the woods, and then it runs, uh, it, it continues to run on along the edge of the woods. I don't know if it goes all the way around the property or not, but it's like a black chain link fence. Um, there are some trees that are right along it that have fallen down onto the fence and have damaged the fence, but, um, I, I've not actually taken a measurement on what the distance is from the fence to what we believe is, is our, because there's stakes that have been put up since. I'm assuming that that's basically to do, um, you know, to check the layout of, of the property and stuff. But, um, recently I was gone on a hunting trip, and when I came home, I noticed that there's pink ribbons tried, tied into the shrubs in my backyard, which is right on the property.
We might be able to address some of your questions here, and then get, give a little bit of guidance for you.
Sure. So, thinking about in comparison of where his property is, it's the second one north from Ironwood Drive. So, thinking about, um, where Ironwood extends and then where Hawthorne Ridge essentially begins.
My house would actually be the third one.
Okay, sorry. So, that's a pretty good view, so it's the upper left-hand corner. So, there will be lots that flips the layout of the site, so there will be a lot that runs essentially perpendicular to the rear yards of those on Hackberry Court. So, top left where it says Block 2. So, that will be the closest portion to your home.
Are we able to clarify, like, the markers that he's seen, what, what?
Sure, so I suspect that it was...
What all that defines?
Yeah, a survey team generally goes out to mark property lines just to get a clearer idea of where the site actually starts and stops. Um, the pink is probably marked for trees that will be taken down as part of the development. So, thinking about that, it might be a good idea if you're unsure about where your property line is, to have that located.
Well, I know that they came up there and they did, they did, they surveyed, so from Ironwood, they came all the way across the backyards and put stakes out. And so, when they did that, it became evident to me that the previous owner basically stretched out his backyard and mowed, mowed in there. There, when I moved in, there was a fire ring there that I took out because it didn't make sense to me because it was right back in the corner of the woods, which is not where I would put a fire ring, but... So, I took that out and then obviously found where my sprinklers are. So, since the stakes were put up, I actually quit mowing more of my lawn.
Sure.
You know, figuring, okay, well, this isn't my property either. Um, but yeah, the, basically the pink ribbons that are in the shrubs are right on the line.
Just if it helps, this is the packet, it was for tonight's meeting, it's page 44 of the packet, and I think that's your house.
That's what I like.
This is my house right here.
That's how it...
I'll also make the point that people often do extend their yards further than typical. Generally not in a malicious way, it's something that just naturally happens when there's nothing behind you. Um, that's not something that we generally enforce really hard, just because it's tough and ever-changing. So, at that point, um, just knowing where the property line is, we're not going to go out there and cite him for something because that's how it was existing. Um, it's going to back up largely to woods. I would say it's likely not going to be an issue if there's sprinklers, anything back there.
Okay, so, so based on what I'm seeing, then that will basically, the property line of the, of the first home that goes in there will basically be right up against my property line. And will be in the area where the water is, where, um, I have a neighbor that's here, Karanti, he lives right next to me. Um, he, he was the original builder of, of his house and, um, had done some asking about, um, some stuff that he was planning and was told back during the development that he could not put anything in there because that was a wetland area. So, um, I have an idea now what I'm going to lose for canopy and for trees. I guess I'm still a little concerned about what's going to be done with the water that sits in that area because I don't want development that's going to push that water into my property. And then I have to pay and deal with it, so that's one of my concerns. And I guess as far as the rest, I'll have to buy some mature trees and plant them along the property line, so. Get my wood coverage back.
Sure. And I will say, um, there have been some drainage concerns across this entire site due to the, how it sits and the amount of trees and the amount of bluff that's on there. But, I personally do think that the development of this project is probably going to help with some of the drainage concerns. So, through development, they do need to mitigate for stormwater runoff, so thinking about directing, directing them to locations where water naturally will sit. So, it might be getting stuck for reason X, Y, or Z right now, but they will be required with development of this project to take that water and move it correctly. So, I can't speak right now exactly what that's going to look like and how that will affect your property, but generally, I would say runoff concerns usually get better when a development does happen just because we have a chance to evaluate it, look at it. We have both a project engineer and then the city engineer that reviews, thinking about how water needs to runoff a site.
Just for clarification, because we did have one email that also spoke to a water concern, so I just want to know if it's the same area that we're talking about?
No, so Greg Witt lives on Sixth Street, so he lives on the southern chunk of the property. Yep. He lives in the Big Red Barn on the corner, or next to the barn.
Okay. Do you feel like that answered your questions adequately?
Yep.
And I think maybe just moving forward, getting you the right contact person to follow up as you have further questions about that, or if you witness anything else that you want to share with us as we move through the development part?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, hello, if you can state your name and address?
Good evening, my name is Karanti Gotimukula, and my address is 1633 Hackberry Court, Carver. And I'm right next to Lynn.
Okay.
And I'm the original property owner, I've been there for eight-plus years already. And a couple of things I would like to bring to the attention was, uh, a couple of weeks back, the city, I believe, somebody contacted me from the property, barn property owner, asking me about the layout and everything, then I, I mentioned to them saying that when I bought the house, I was told clearly that my backyard is a wetland zone, and I'm not supposed to even touch anything, and they did a measurement saying that it's actually four feet or five feet from the fence towards my backyard is the property that belongs to the barn owner, and the remaining area is a wetland zone. And the way they have designed is the water actually slopes into my backyard from the entire neighborhood. And, uh, my basement got flooded twice because of that. And during the second year, once my basement got flooded, I reached out to the city saying that here is a problem, and, uh, how can we fix it? They, they recommended me to work through the builder. And my builder at that point created a drainage line that connects to the sewer outside of the neighborhood is number one, and I requested, is there any way you can find something different? Because it's actually stacking up water in my backyard. So, they have redone the entire sod in my backyard, they redid the slopes again in my yard, and in such a way that the water actually flows right into that, uh, the pit in the backyard rather than sitting in my property. And my concern is, uh, when the gentleman called me a couple of weeks back and said they'll be doing markings, and as Lynn mentioned, they did put stakes, and those stakes are specific to my property line, and I clearly understand that, but I would like to know what their property line is. Because based on my understanding, if, if they assume that the wetland belongs to them and try to cover that up and use that as a property, as a new property, then the, the current, uh, design of water that's being collected in that basin is going to cause more problems to me because my basement got flooded again last year. Uh, just because of that, I'm like, water keeps on recycling there, and it's too much water that collects into that backyard, and I have to put two some pumps and to keep it running, but I can't do anything in there. And the other one is when we originally bought these... I can't do anything in there. And the other one is when we originally bought these, uh, property, uh, I was, I was told that it's like a wooded neighborhood, even though the trees belong to the property owner, nothing should be, uh, in your wetland zone. So hopefully, uh, there will be still kind of natural life and, uh, uh, natural trees in there that will, uh, we, we can't plant anything in there. At the same time, you can't remove it, anything, anything in there. And, uh, they, we paid a premium for that plant, assuming that to, for the view, for the natural life and everything. And all of a sudden, if somebody's going to take the trees to the ground and build, build a house right behind him backyard, obviously that will affect, uh, our personal lifestyle as well as, uh, the value of the property too. So those are the two things. And I'm especially concerned with the water zoning there. And I just want to understand before they put something in there, are we taking the right steps? So I don't go through this again because I already paid enough insurance claims to, to, to fix the problem. So those are the two things.
So I just have a, a two clarifying questions. One for you. Um, when you said somebody called you in the last week or two from the development, is that what you meant?
Yes.
The development that we're working on right now?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think the original call was from the, the property owner by itself. And later on, she couldn't, uh, answer some of my questions. So the agent called me and I told him to send me the documentation, what documentation you have versus, because I compared with what I have signed eight years ago.
Sure.
And he sent me the same thing what I have. And, uh, it still calls, called out as a wetland zone, but then if it's a wetland zone, how come they are claiming that as their property? And I shouldn't be even worried about it.
Sure. So I want to clarify that question next. So what's the definition or like this verbiage of the wetland zone?
Yeah. I think that, um, Mark Roush with Alliant, the project engineer is here. If he's comfortable, I might ask him to come up and answer some of these questions specifically.
I think that would be great. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
My name is Mark Roush with Alliant Engineering. Do you need my address as well?
I don't, I don't know. I think we're good.
First I'll just say, so maybe just briefly talk about the wetland delineation. As typical process, uh, wetland delineation has been done and there is no defined wetland. That doesn't mean there isn't drainage going on there, but there is no wetland per se that's delineated as a protected-
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand. Is that, is that the discrepancy maybe in-
Well, it's reviewed by the, you know, the TEP. Basically there's a delineation done and then that goes through a process reviewed by the government agencies, but being from the city and then the, the state with the TEP. And nobody, uh, there deemed to be no wetland in that area. There are wetlands on the site and they're in the plans. There's two, but there is no wetland in that particular location. So I don't know if that helps.
What helps?
You know, when we talk about wetland being a protected wetland.
Right. Well, and they certainly, I mean, the verbiage that was being used as far as not being able to utilize it, access it, plant anything on it, don't cut anything down on it, sounds similar to that.
I'm aware of that project having an easement required on the bluff line that was a no disturb limit. But he's, I don't believe his lot is putting the buff. So I don't know where that would, I guess, I'm not sure what he was told that, we're not aware. We have title work pulled, everything. There's no easements. There's nothing that prevents anything in that area behind his lot on Ms. Redmond's property.
Okay.
However, you need to be careful that you do not relocate water into his, their backyards.
So what we'll do is, absolutely. So with what's going to be proposed by us, we'll want to definitely make sure. So if there's something that's so subtle that it didn't get picked up in some survey shots or something, we'll definitely go out there, take some more data, get some more data so we can find where that low point is and probably put an inlet in, catch basin of some sort to pick up that water. You know, the trade-offs always within areas like that, it could be treed, you know, and that's a sensitive thing to not, if you put in a storm sewer now, you're looking at taking trees out to do so. So we'll try to evaluate that and I'm sure we can work with the homeowner to some degree on that. But I know D.R. Horton will be able to find the best solution there.
I think it would be very helpful if you could give them a, someone to contact-
Sure.
-as, as we move along.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sure that's definitely possible. And I'm, me and Mike will likely go out there, walk it. I'd like to actually walk and see it.
That'd be great because obviously, I mean, as you know, property owners know their property intimately.
For sure. Yeah.
I have a question that relates to some of the water drainage. When in the process, and maybe this question could be deferred to somewhere else or it's for a future meeting, when do you identify, locate, um, springs, any aquifers? I know the surrounding parcels, definitely there's a history of springs and some water aquifers. When does that come?
Well, to be, I mean, I guess the wetland walk, I know the staff member, Tony Castor, he walked the site thoroughly. He looked for that. He looked through the national wetland inventory maps. He looked at, there's actually quite a bit of info-
But I'm not so much what you would see, but once you start digging-
Right.
-will you find out?
You, you do have a little bit of having to deal with it if you find it.
Or when do we, what stage do we address that?
I would say at the time, but I'd need to talk to what the city's process is. Maybe, Aaron, if you've seen that come across and how the engineering department wants to deal with it, or Brian?
And I'm, to me, this is important just because the history for some of the surrounding parcels, that has been an issue?
Sure.
Good evening. Mike Sewell at D.R. Horton Homes. I'm a land development manager for D.R. Horton. Um, our standard process there is we've done soil borings on the site already with our soils engineers, looking for, um, what type of soils out there, if there's anything hidden in the ground. Um, that doesn't identify every spot on the site. We'll do some test pits out there at some point in the stormwater ponds, just to make sure the ponds, um, are the type of soils we believe will be there. And then at that point, we may do some more test holes just, just to see what's underneath the ground. But as of right now, the borings and what we've done so far hasn't shown us to have anything. But we are all experienced folks that have worked around the bluffs and we understand that, um, there may be springs that you call or spots where the sand bleeds out of the bluff. Um, so we'll continue to look and throughout the whole process, we continue to monitor it. We'll work with the city staff if we come across a wet spot that, um, we didn't know about when we were putting in utilities. That's, that's usually when we find them.
Okay.
When we're putting the sewer water in the ground, they hit a wet pocket and we need to have a conversation with the city engineer and the public works folks to see what's the best way for long-term to handle it.
Something to note too, at the time of construction, we do have an engineer on-site generally for the duration of the project. So they spend all day there monitoring the construction. So it's eyes both from the development team as well as a representative from the city that's on the site, watching the construction happen, thinking through some of these issues too.
Thank you both. Um, I only have a comment, I guess, as far as like following up for the two homeowners as far as advocating on this property, um, kind of discrepancy, I would say.
Sure.
And then further, like what direction to give them to follow up on that and the difference in the wetland, um, description, I mean, versus protected wetland? Because this does not sound like it's a protected wetland.
So at this, um, phase in the project, we still are working through final plat too. So I'll bring this up both to the city engineer and the public services director just to see if we know anything about it. We'll keep an eye on it. And then also I would advocate both for a contact at D.R. Horton and also the city, just in case something does happen. It changed, site conditions can change kind of quickly, but having someone there from our, um, city engineering team, generally they can vet some of the questions, but it can definitely be something we think about through the development of the project.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments?
Hello.
Hello. Welcome.
I'm just curious, I can't tell from the pictures how much of the hill behind where we are is going to be reserved as is. It moves into, it's kind of a hill here. Then as it goes farther down, it's more of a cliff. I'm just concerned that we clear cut the whole thing. You've got a road.
So you're speaking-
And then some concern about where the road is going. That is a wet spot at the bottom. So you go, you make that turn where the road is spotted to go and it goes like that and then it goes like that into a wet spot. So I don't know.
Which, which road are you talking about?
I'm talking about the little road off of Sunny Ridge Drive into the 21 House Development.
The South Walk.
So the-
The hard city in that spot at the bottom. Oftentimes, I don't know why they picked that spot to put the road. Those are my only issues. When you look at the pictures, it looks like the lot lines are coming right up to the top of the hill. I was wondering if they're down the hill away.
So Sunny Ridge-
Can we specify, yeah, right on the grading spot?
Sunny Ridge Drive for reference is the southern cul-de-sac. So it's the portion where the 21 lots will come off. We've been referring to it as like the southern chunk of the development. So there is a platted roadway easement through that development. So the road that he's talking about it is platted. It's open right now essentially. And the lot lines for the Hawthorne Ridge property that's, um, going to be adjacent to it, it will be directly next to existing property lines. So thinking about that, um, it's like your property neighbor on either side of you, your property lines are shared. So it's a communal property line between two people essentially. Um, I just heard Mark say that he's pretty aware of the wet spot in the sag in the road. So I think that's likely being mitigated through the construction drawings. Something to think about though is, um, like the setbacks of the property. So the property lines can touch, but then, so it will be two side yards. So it'll be seven and a half feet off that property line at minimum before the house.
Can we have somebody speak specifically to the first question with the grading? I mean, that sounded like a grading question. Maybe it wasn't quite worded that way, which obviously will, as we move forward, that'll all work itself out.
Is it going to be, are you going to clear cut the whole hill and start constructing there? I'm looking at the one across the other side of, uh, where they're putting, they just cut everything in sight down. I mean, cleared it right to the ground.
There you have it.
Everywhere and started building their houses. Is this going to be the same kind of an approach?
So the area-
Talking about preserving some of the trees, but I think it's important to preserve part of what's on that hill where you're going to have an erosion problem.
Go ahead. City Planner Smith, can you go back to the slide that showed the three, um, connecting roads?
Sure.
I am familiar with the, uh, property and I don't have any concerns because I think once the work starts getting done, we'll actually have good drainage there. Um, so it's the one on the bottom left. It's never been maintained. I don't, I haven't seen any work done on it in eighteen years. So, um, I think once the right team works on it with making a road there and having the drainage in place, I, I feel confident that-
That'll be remedied.
Yeah, that'll be adequate.
Well, I mean, when I moved in and put it aside, to give you an idea of how much water comes down that hill, all of the sod in the backyard got washed out.
I believe it.
So when I say you could have an erosion problem, are you serious? Do you think you have an erosion problem because the plants are what- That's mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi there. Kyle Kellner, 1641 White Pine Way. I'm three houses south of the gentleman in the back. And water seems to be the topic of the night. Um, I'm, I guess, calling about there, or, or speaking about that as well. Uh, I, in the bottom right photo with the stop sign in the yard, that's my house. And, uh, I've had water in my basement already once and my neighbor directly to the north of me, Joe Beckman, has had water in his basement once. I think half of that is due to the, the drainage and half of that's due to the water pumps that Pulte put in our houses unfortunately not being of the highest quality. So I'm not going to, you know, call that fully on, on the drainage. But if I'm correct too, I believe Alliant is the one that graded our neighborhood as well as, is going to be grading the new one. Um, so I, I'm just, I guess my first point is to advocate that once the water is, you know, reviewed for this, maybe all of the neighbors that back up to that plot be involved. Because if it's going to be, um, you know, if it's like a sewer drain that gets put in, because that's the best thing, or a berm, you know, it'd just be nice to be, you know, I mean, I, obviously we're not going to dictate that process, but it'd be nice to be as informed about it as possible. Um, point one. Uh, point two, I was just, or it's a question. I'm just wondering, so we, we did meet about this back in June. Here we are five months later. I guess I was assuming this project was going to be, had, you know, started already and then there were going to be shovels in the ground. So I'm just curious in terms of if there was a reason for the delay.
Yes. So thinking about the property line along Old Broadway or Snake Trail, there were some title issues that were happening for D.R. Horton. I don't think we need to go in, into any of the details. They have been cleared up, but that added just a couple weeks in the process. So nothing out of the ordinary. Well, it was bizarre, but nothing that would hold us up for any planning approval.
Perfect. And then my last question was one I asked back then and I think I got the answer. We're looking into it is a, a traffic study in terms of all of the development that's going on. And I know that that was just being started last time. So if that had been completed, I was just curious, just because it relates to this and all the other developments.
Do you want me to speak to that?
Sure. That'd be great.
Based on the number of homes, a traffics, a formal traffic study isn't required for this property.
Well, not this, but Meridian Fields and everything else that's going in.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Okay. So, uh, Jonathan Carver Parkway, is that the study you're thinking about?
Yeah. Yep.
So the council, um, had WSB in at the last meeting, which was November fifth. Um, so they are still, they're working on the study. We're anticipating seeing some drawings, um, this next spring with full adoption likely 2019. So something that we're still working on. Um, so there have been some things that have added some additional strain to that project. The amount of development is one of them, just based on the things that are being reviewed simultaneously with this traffic study. So still very much underway. Um, there is a new project page on Carver County's website. It's a partnership with Carver County. So if you're looking for up-to-date newest versions of the plan, I would say Carver County website is the best spot to find them right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, so, and then one last question, because the, the picture made me think of it. In terms of, uh, like stop signs, and when we get to that far, I know we're not there yet. This is a plot review, but would that be at the city council meeting, the next city council meeting, or when it comes back to you for the final review that those questions could be raised?
Yep. So those are included in the preliminary plat submission. So we get a typical idea of where the stop signs might go. Um, we do our best guess, but often in times when things start working, they operate a little bit different than we think. Um, Greg is a pretty great example. He brought up a concern in Copper Hills. Staff took a look at it and realized, yeah, that is actually an issue. So we give it our best first guess, but if it continues to be an issue, absolutely let us know and we can evaluate if traffic is moving differently than we anticipated at the time of plating.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Can I ask a question? Um, maybe if you can go back to the one that you were at previously, um, that did show elevation changes?
Should we, do we need to close our public hearing first?
Or just let me, I have one question.
Okay.
Uh, not this one. There we go. Thank you. So, um, I believe, okay, so like, I'm just going to look around the tot lot. I'm looking more in the left diagram, um, because, you know, I think those elevation changes on the far east side of the, and southeast side of the property have bluff, um, setback areas. Um, so I think that there's a dotted line on there that shows the bluff setback. I'm just wondering if the bluff setback is in any of the lots?
There are a couple, yes.
There are a couple where it does touch that. Okay.
And that was one of our concerns, thinking through like the Carver Bluffs project. It often has been a, a point of contention that someone comes in, buys a house and suddenly says, I can't put a deck on now.
Right.
So we've reviewed that with a project team and they've accommodated for the lot a little bit differently. So something that we recognize at a staff level that can get heated and testy.
I just, yeah, we've seen those issues in the past with previous developments. I just want to make sure it's just not a non-issue for this developer, development so that people, as you said, are buying the houses, they understand that their property is developable.
Right.
Okay. That was my only question.
Madam Chair, if no one else is interested in speaking, I'd recommend closing the public hearing.
Right. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further?
No further discussion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to-
Sorry, to clarify, was that the closing of the public hearing? There's two motions for the project.
Right. So we should close the public hearing?
Yep.
And then we should, right, and then we should-
Correct. There you go.
Go on to the, wherever we're at.
Are we ready to make a motion, or is there any other questions?
Oh, yeah, do we have any discussion from our end besides-
I didn't have any.
Based off of our public comments that clarified a lot of things for me, I think.
Okay, I make a motion to recommend approval of rezoning from agricultural to R2.
I'll second.
I'll let Jim have the second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I can make a motion to approve the preliminary plat?
Correct. I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries? Okay, we'll move on to our next presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'd like to note if anyone from the Hawthorne Ridge project isn't interested in the next four items on the agenda, please feel free to slip out anytime that you feel appropriate. And the next project that we are talking about is Carver Ridge. So tonight we have four requests before you. It's going to be a heavy lift, but we'll get through it together. So it's a rezoning request, a conditional use permit, preliminary plat, and final plat. So some context of where we're at. This is the redevelopment site of the former Lenzin Bus Garage. So it's on Sixth Street, just east of Community Park. So thinking about where we're at, it's across the park, sorry, that's City Hall. So City Hall, it's Jonathan Carver Parkway, farthest to the west. Where we're at in the process right now, the Planning Commission reviewed a concept plan on August 30th of this summer, city council on November 4th. And you'll see several "You Are Here" signs right now. So tonight it's preliminary plat, rezoning, and final plat. Something to note, when a site is one site, or typically one user, it's pretty common to run simultaneously preliminary plat and a final plat together, just because there's not substantial changes between the two. The project is anticipated to go to the city council at the first meeting in December, so December 3rd, 2018. This project has a lot of history with some of you, I think. So I'm gonna give just a really brief overview of how we got to the point where we're at today. So in December of 2015, so roughly three years ago, the city acquired the property for redevelopment. February 2016, the city council asked the Planning Commission to develop some guiding principles for the site. November 2016, an RFP was issued due to the city in late January. Two proposals were received at that time, one from Shingabee, which was a senior living development, and then an additional of some twin homes, also senior living focused. May 1st, the city selected Shingabee as the developer for the site. April, Shingabee partners with Trident Development. August 30th, we had the neighborhood meeting, Planning Commission, and then the most recent step, the city council reviewed the concept plan and comprehensive plan amendment that were required on September 4th, bringing us to tonight, the Planning Commission review. So at the time of the guiding principles, I'm gonna ask you to think about these as we start to talk about the Carver Ridge project. So the Planning Commission came up with the following principles. So there was a preference to senior living at a moderate price point. There was a wish to keep the existing berm and trees. The building should not be more than two stories. The appearance should look residential, should be complementary to surrounding property owners, and a garden area and landscape features should be incorporated. So I'm gonna ask you to keep those in the back of your head as we start to think through this project a little bit together. So this is a rendering of the project that Trident Development out of St. Cloud, who's proposing the project, has given to us. So a general idea of what the project might look like. As you start to think through some of those guiding principles, it starts to check some of the boxes. So it's a two-story facility, 70 units, a mix of assisted living and memory care. As you'll recall, we have processed a comprehensive plan amendment at the Planning Commission and city council level. So in the draft 2030 plan, it was guided for low-density, single-family. The density that's being proposed by Trident is a high-density user, so bumping it from low to high, which is every city planner's dream in the time of comprehensive planning, is to move density up. So we're bumping this comprehensive plan amendment from low-density to high-density. So the first request to you, first request before you tonight is rezoning. So the property is currently zoned ag. And thinking through some of the users on the site, there likely wasn't a category that we had that really fit what was being done on the property. So it was guided ag and several conditional use permits were issued. There were several issues with those conditional use permits that were issued, often being revoked by the city council due to several reasons, operating hours, sound, disruption of the residential neighborhood surrounding it. So it is currently zoned ag. The request before you tonight is to rezone it to R3. So thinking through our R3 district in our city code, that's the highest density we have. So R1 is typical, large executive, single-family. R2 is a little bit smaller, single-family, also can be a duplex. And then R3 hits to, starts to hit like a town home, a small apartment complex, or something similar to this with the senior living. So R3 is the highest density type in the city code, also correlates with our comprehensive plan that sets the density. So density numbers specifically are in a comprehensive plan, and then our zoning ties with that. So it's one of the places where the city code and the comprehensive plans speak to each other pretty well. So thinking R3, high-density, then the comprehensive plan outlines that specific number. So something else that you're considering tonight is the planned residential development. So it's an overlay of the project. So thinking about times when this is applicable, to say, hey, we're thinking it's kind of in our three project, but we need a little bit of flexibility because our project is unique. So adding the PRD over the top allows for some flexibility in the strict zoning classifications. And it typically needs to apply to a project that is unique. So it likely wouldn't be for a single-family user, or a single-family developer that just wants setbacks to be a little bit smaller, to squeeze a couple more lots in. That's not a great application of the PRD, just because it's not a unique use that we can advocate for to have some flexibility. So the flexibility that the Carver Ridge project is looking for, the one that doesn't meet the typical R3 standard in our city code is that front yard setback. So thinking about its location in relation to Sixth Street, there will be a reduction from the typical 25-foot setback to 23. So nothing major, but again, this type of development doesn't really fit in our city code. Often the residential districts speak really specifically to single-family, not so much these high-density projects. So adding that PRD overlay allows us some flexibility because it's a unique project. The second request before you is a conditional use permit. So a conditional use permit typically allows a project to operate that's a little bit different. So the PRD and the CUP, which are too many planning acronyms together, will be drafted as one document that will allow for the project to operate in the unique manner. So nothing out of the ordinary that we typically wouldn't see from a senior living, but it is required in our city code that it's a conditional use. Again, thinking through preliminary and final plat, it's again, not the most fun, pretty document, but it shows the typical lot layout, the easements of the site, the typical lots. So it's just one on the site, but shows relation to the existing development. We have had a lot of discussion about this project in fire access. Our fire marshal has been fantastic reviewing this project. It's the first one that he's reviewed in the city of Carver as a senior living development. So thinking about what type of fire access he's going to require for the fire department if they ever were to need to access the site. The first time we saw this, I think that you saw when there was a fire access around the entire building, but that ultimately took out a majority of the berm and the mature trees that were on the site, which is one of the guiding principles. Also, I think was important for property owners surrounding, just thinking about that visual barrier that will be there with the berm and the trees. So through several different versions and lots of hard work from both the developer and our fire marshal, we've come to the agreement that the fire access does not need to extend the entire property, so all the way around the building. You'll see it's the dark gray. You can see a typical fire truck and how they will access the site. So they'll be able to get about a quarter of the way behind the building, and then if they had to, they could turn around on that semi hammerhead. So the fire department has reviewed this and feels comfortable. The building will also be sprinkled, so something to note, that in the event of a fire, it's not likely that anyone would ever need to get back there, but if they had to, they would very much have that ability. So thinking about that in relation to how the site functions with trail and walkability of the site, this, I think, was really important to the Planning Commission to thinking about not only the residents on the site and allowing them some space to be outside, but also visitors of the site and how they can access our robust trail system and enjoy the city of Carver. So the red dotted line shows the proposed trail around the entire building, so that fire access will be included as part of the walking trail. And then it does loop to Sixth Street, which allows you to enter either, if you take a right from the site into the downtown, or a left into Community Park. So either way you go, you jump onto a pretty robust trail system that's pretty well-connected. So thinking through that accommodation, both for residents of the site as well as visitors. So that fire access doubles both for fire protection, but also becomes a recreational activity too. Another guiding principle was thinking about landscaping and providing a robust buffer as well as plantings on the site. So you'll see on the proposed landscaping plan, the trees that look a little bit like stars are the existing mature trees that are on the site, mostly near the berm. And then you'll see throughout the site, there are several overstory trees that will be added. So it'll give the site a feel of a residential user with a robust planting. There's another part two. So several foundation plantings will be added along the property as well. Joy, did you have a question?
So I'm confused. I'm looking at my packet, and I'm looking at the landscaping plan. And I don't see in the lower right, the left-hand corner, that.
Yep. Yep. So I will say the fire access was a moving target. We probably saw six different versions of it back and forth.
Okay.
The one that's on the screen tonight is the most updated, so it will allow the truck turnaround, which was imperative for a fire truck to be able to get back there.
Not connecting to any adjacent properties?
Nope.
But is taking out more trees?
It is, yes.
Okay.
So we felt that was a pretty good compromise compared to the fire access route that would need to go around the entire building.
Okay.
It was a pretty good compromise just to get that little corner that would need to be paved.
So can you describe what happens with the retaining wall?
Sure. Let me see. There's a good one. I know it. So you can see there's a slight lighter gray line outside of the truck, along the truck access route. So that's a retaining wall that loops then back along the trail and runs towards the east property line.
Okay.
Correct. Yep.
Essentially of the darker gray.
It is.
All right, I got it.
Okay, so again, here's our rendering of the project. So thinking about the rezoning request from ag to R3 with a PRD overlay, the conditional use permit to allow for a residential care facility, and then thinking through the preliminary plat and final plat. So preliminary plat and final plat are asked to be run simultaneously since it's one site, not a lot of changes between the two. So for this project, there is also a public hearing that is required to be held. So if you wanna, if you wanna start with questions and then open it up, there are members from Trident here tonight. So if, again, if you have project-specific questions, I'll likely defer to them.
I have a quick question about the conditional use.
Sure.
I had dealt with many conditional use issues with this site before.
Yep.
I assume this is kind of a one-time thing. It doesn't have to be checked every year?
Correct. And if I, if the city code weren't set up the way that it were, I do think the PRD covers a lot of the things that the conditional use permit would cover. So it almost feels like we're doubling up a little bit, but it's required in our city code. So I think the two of them together, working as one document, will be the most effective way to move forward.
I had a quick question. Can you, maybe you can speak to it, maybe Trident needs to speak to this. We had a lot of discussion in the concept plan about lighting and the parking lot and the effect upon the neighbors across the, across Sixth Street. And it appears, my perception is that we've moved the parking lot closer to the building, that there's more space between the parking lot and Sixth Street.
Correct.
And so that in my mind would kind of address a lot of those concerns about light pollution getting across Sixth Street and affecting the neighbors across that way.
That was a wise perception.
Is that perception true? Okay.
And then something else, we have requested that the developer thinks about the lights that are along Levi Griffin right now. So thinking about, there are less of the Cobras that give off a ton of light. They still very much illuminate a street. But the technology today, the light is very much directed down. Not a lot of it moves up for light pollution. So it'll offer site safety, I think, without being an issue for surrounding property owners.
Okay, I think we can move forward and open the public hearing. If we have anybody out there wishing to address or make comments, you can step forward. I think it's a no. So now we can make a motion to close it.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So do we have any other comments?
I have a comment and just a discussion, and probably will bring up some questions maybe for the developer. In one of the previous meetings, they had pointed out the blue spruce trees. I think they even had a, if I identified them right.
That sounds right.
And I know when there's gonna be a major project like this, that's a lot of stress on the trees. So maybe they won't survive. But what is kind of the plan? What trees are they gonna try to keep? And how, as a city, do we keep the developer accountable for replacement? And how do we-
Sure.
Be able to, if need be, replace them with something very, the same, similar?
Comparable.
That's a good question. So again, similar to what I said with the Hawthorne Ridge project, there is a construction engineer on site that monitors. So not to say that anything were to happen on the site, but they're kind of the city hall's eyes and ears on the property. So if something happens, we generally get a call pretty quickly. But then as we start to move through some acceptance processes, so the city performs walkthroughs. So it's typically, we look at like sidewalks, we look at condition of the pipes that are going in, and we also look at landscaping. So it's typically me, the public services director, and then a couple of our public service workers that go out. And we take the landscape plan that's approved at the time at the city council, and we go through and we check everything. So it's a tedious process, but it's generally in the spring when it's a lovely day. But it's something that we do keep an eye on. If a tree does get either, if it dies through construction, it is required to be replaced. So it might not be of the same stature, just because a tree that's planted is often not as mature as the one that's removed. But it is something that's checked throughout the process.
Can the city make that part of the stature?
What's that, to do a mature tree?
Yes.
I would say relocating a mature tree is pretty risky. So to get a tree of similar stature, to take it from a mature location to another, it's a risk. So we could absolutely think about the types of trees that we transport, but it generally, we steer away from doing mature tree from, to a new location.
Understand.
Hello? Good evening, chair members of the Planning Commission. If I may just add one comment. From a long-term perspective, typically whether it's our contract that we're gonna, I'm Patrick Bramble with Trident Development based out of St. Cloud. From a landscaping perspective, we're typically gonna require a warranty from our general contractor to the landscaping contractor. In addition to that, there's gonna be a warranty that is gonna be required between us and the city through a development agreement. And so if we do have a planting and it, and something goes wrong within that first year or two during the warranty period, we're required to come back out and replace it, make sure it's established appropriately and inspected by the city and approved by the city. So it's not something that just happens during the project. It's a couple of years after the project is over. We continue to monitor that.
Great.
I think something that's helpful too is that the developer and the team that's managing the site, they don't leave the site. So thinking about when D.R. Horton constructs, they likely move out once all the houses are out, but some of those issues- but some of those issues then arise and the city gets the call, like, who do I need to talk to? It's generally the developer. But in this case, the developer is on-site, so I think we'll have a pretty good pulse throughout both construction and the first couple of years, if things start to look a little bit different than what we anticipated.
Great. I guess I would just follow what Joy kind of talked about as far as, you know, at the concept plan public hearing, there was a lot of feedback about all of these topics. I mean, the landscaping, the berm, the fire entrance, the parking lot, and the lightings, you know. Do, I mean, as the project moves forward, since we're doing preliminary and final on the same night, as far as advocating or communicating with that same group.
Yes.
Our information on it as we move forward will be posted.
Yes, and I created an email group from that night, so I provided information about this meeting and the packet, so if they're interested, they have the information.
Great.
That is great.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any questions as far as the rezoning part goes? We can maybe, one block at a time.
I'm happy to go ahead and make a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning from agricultural to R3 with a PRD overlay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay.
Madam Chair, there's three more motions on the property.
Right.
Okay.
I know.
I, I was just gonna ask, I didn't know if we had, we got that one done.
Yeah.
So are we good? Does anybody have any other questions, or can this go through? Or do you wanna do each one at a time? As far as the conditional use permit and all of that.
My questions have been answered, I'm comfortable going through it.
Yeah, my questions have been answered as well.
Great. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve a conditional use permit to allow the, allow a residential care facility, a conditional use permit to allow residential care facility.
I'll second the motion. Go ahead. She's got it.
Okay, Lori seconded?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Carver Ridge.
I'll second that.
Oh, go ahead.
We're just trying to get through it, right?
We're trying to be efficient.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, last but not least. Make a motion to approve the final plat for Carver Ridge.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, one just super minor thing. I know we, it was mentioned in, I think, the memo or something like that, that the name was being changed because of, we wanted to be able to locate it from an emergency perspective.
Correct.
There's already a Carver Ridge next to Carver Bluffs, I would recommend a name change.
Oh, what is Carver Ridge?
It's right adjacent to Carver Bluffs, it's kind of part of our development.
Noted, that's good to know, thank you.
Thanks.
Back to the drawing board.
Thank you, Joy.
Actually really important.
You already got one.
Huh, I just, thank you, I didn't even know that.
Gold star tonight, Joy.
It's not real big, but it's there.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay. Let's see, moving on, um, hang on a second. So 4.3, the fee schedule sign ordinance amendment, Aaron.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission.
Thank you.
As you'll recall, we recently reviewed the fee schedule for 2019, so it's a typical practice that the planning commission looks at. You look specifically at the land use and planning fees. So through the development of the updated fee schedule, it was determined that two ordinance amendments that were required. So the first is for a sign permit. So our city code actually calls for a sign permit that we currently don't have or operate with, but something that we're going to address in 2019, that will give us the ability to review that sign. The staff time that's required for that review does now have a fee associated with it, too. So thinking through that, it essentially cleans up our ordinance to say, yes, we have a permit, and yes, there is a fee. I think that this will give us a better check and balance on some of the signs that are going up in town, just to say, hey, did you get a permit for that? There is a formal process for it at City Hall. So moving forward in 2019, there will be a more concrete way for us to review signs. So with that, we do need to add a little bit of language to our city code, so it's in red on the top, so it's the permit and required permit fee as determined by the city's fee schedule. And something to think about is that we won't need to update that annually, since it just refers to the fee schedule that gets updated, so that one will solidly sit the way that it is in the future, most likely, unless something drastic happens. But it will ebb and flow with that fee schedule as it moves. So I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit, so the first ordinance is the sign ordinance, which does require a public hearing. These are both related, so it's a sign permit and preliminary plat. But my city attorney would really appreciate me if we did the public hearing separately. So I would encourage you to open it up for discussion, comments, questions, and then do two separate public hearings.
Yep, will do. Okay. So we can now open the public hearing. Correct, the draft sign ordinance amendment. And then we can note, if there's anybody who wants to make a comment, it looks like nobody's coming forward.
Ah, come on, come up with something.
So I believe we can swiftly close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any discussion? Okay.
So I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the sign ordinance amendment.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Lovely, going back, so the second part of this is again a public hearing. So thinking about preliminary plat, right now there's an application fee, a cost reimbursement agreement, and then an escrow. So thinking about the way that we charge developers right now, we essentially, we stack up the bills that we get from our city engineer and our city attorney, and throughout the process, we invoice them. So taking an escrow in, it essentially gives us a cushion to charge against, so it removes the billing process between the developer and the city for several processes. That escrow number does change based on the number of units that are in a development, so smaller developments that we don't think will require as much engineering work or legal review by our city attorney, has a smaller escrow amount. It does increase as the developments get larger. If we were ever to go above and beyond the escrow, then we would enter into that billing phase, where we would get a bill, bill the developer, they would pay us back. But adding this escrow takes some of that pressure off of the back and forth, just because it adds some stress to several departments in the city, just thinking, did we get that bill yet, how much is it for, what development is it for? So adding this escrow gives us essentially a cushion to charge against for the development.
Right, we need to, okay. Sorry. Okay, so we'll now open the public hearing, I think this is the fourth one, public hearing, on the subdivision ordinance amendment. And we'll note there's no public comments, and we'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, discussion?
Yes.
Thank you. This question is for Ms. Smith. Thank you for doing the escrow, I think that's a really smart idea. My question is somewhat related, but just curious, with all the development that we have going on in the city and all of, or the recent case with Woodbury and impact fees, does any of this impact or change, or have you taken that into consideration as part of this?
Good question. So there are Woodburys running into some issues about development fees and what they're able to charge for, both in a development and outside of a development. They ran into some legal trouble when there was a street that needed to be constructed outside of a development that was being processed, so the developer essentially was being asked to pay for something outside of the property line. So it's one of those hot-ticket item right now in local government, everyone's saying like, oh, did you hear about the Woodbury decision? Something that we're keeping a pretty close eye on. Our city attorney has reviewed both ordinances and is comfortable moving forward with both. So a good point and something we've thought about.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I guess, speaking to that, I just have one clarifying question, too, as far as like grandfathering, where's the cutoff line that this starts?
Yes, so when these need to be adopted prior to the fee schedule being adopted, for all of it to work together. So anything that comes in post-fee schedule adoption, which is typically January 1st, 2019. So nothing that we're working on right now, I won't go back and say suddenly, you owe me $20,000 for this escrow. But moving forward, January 1st, 2019.
We, we typically did ask for escrow in a lot of the big developments prior, right?
Yes, and that is often through the cost reimbursement agreement, so it's $10,000 that the city typically keeps, but then gives back at the end of the project. So we didn't typically spend that money necessarily, it was more a placeholder in case something went completely awry. But this escrow essentially will cut out the billing period, so we'll have that cost reimbursement as a fallback, but also the escrow.
I, I should say that during the crash of the mid-2000s, Carver came out pretty well compared to a lot of fast-growing communities in the state. So it's a good idea.
Anything further? Okay, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the subdivision ordinance amendment.
Second to the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the floodplain ordinance presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is our last one, our last public hearing, number five of five. So something that is required by the DNR is updating our floodplain ordinance. So something that the city participates in right now is the National Flood Insurance Program. So thinking about the downtown area, which is subject to flooding, they are able to enroll in the National Flood Insurance Program, which also has a program called the Community Rating System, which allows the city to work towards lower flood insurance premiums for property owners that are required to have flood insurance. So this ordinance update is required by the DNR. If it's not completed by December 21st of this year, we get kicked out of that program, and the property owners lose the ability to have the 20% off that we have earned through the Community Rating System. So communities all across the metro are being tasked with this right now. If you look at any planning commission meeting in any community over the next month, I suspect there's going to be a public hearing for it. So not something that's unique to Carver. There are some FEMA maps that I'll go over in the, in the next couple of slides, which are specific, but this ordinance very much covers the bases. So thinking about the maps and how they play in for Carver, and also allowing us to maintain our status in the National Flood Insurance Program. So thinking about flood insurance and when it's required. If you have a mortgage that is federally backed and you are in the 100-year floodway, you are required to have flood insurance. It doesn't matter the types of improvements that you've done on your house, it's a requirement of a federally-backed mortgage. It's optional if you're in the 500-year floodway. There are several residents in the city of Carver that we know of that are outside of the 100-year floodplain, but do choose to carry flood insurance, just knowing where the 500-year flood line does run. It's through a chunk of the community, so through that program, they can also get the 20% reduction with the National Flood Insurance. So something that's been exciting and challenging were these new FEMA maps. I didn't want to include them in your packet because they're kind of crazy to look at, so I want to be able to talk you through it. So the areas that are fully colored are the previous FEMA areas for flooding. So the blue was the 100-year, pink 500, and then think, look specifically at the lines. So those are the new proposed lines, so the changes are where the blue line sinks either further or below the blue area. So I've highlighted four houses that are impacted. The city's building official and I have been working through this for a while, looking really closely at these maps, thinking about what will happen to the properties. The three properties that are highlighted with the yellow area actually are now falling outside of the 100-year floodplain, which is exciting for them, because they no longer will be required to carry that flood insurance, should they not choose to, if they have a federally-backed mortgage. There sadly is one property with the red arrow that is now within the 100-year floodplain. So three are coming out, one is going in. We have let that property owner know about the change, just so it doesn't come as a surprise that, all of a sudden, what happened, that I have this new requirement. So four properties are directly impacted by these maps, three positively, one negatively. These maps are a little bit tricky to look at, so if they're confusing at all, let me know, I can try to talk you through it.
And when does it go into effect?
December 21st, 2018.
And how often is it reviewed?
Sure, so the ordinance that we have right now is from 1997. So I don't know if there's a typical lifespan for these ordinances, but I think it's been something that communities have struggled with a little bit, because the floodplain language that we have is a little bit clunky. The proposed ordinance was drafted by the DNR, it cleans a lot of it up and it meets state statute. So it essentially takes several ordinances that were probably troublesome to a lot of communities, cleans it up, makes it uniform, allows both cities and the DNR to have a pretty clear understanding of what we're trying to do together. So I don't think they have a typical lifespan. The one that we are operating right now is roughly 20 years old.
And I, it's my understanding that the, kind of the border of the line with the floodplain does not match the property lines.
Correct.
How does that work? Or if somebody had just a small section of their personal floodplain, could they?
So anytime that the...
That land to the city, or?
Yeah. Anytime the blue line touches a property, it's in, it's within the 100-year floodplain. So it could be the front corner of your property, you still would be required to have it for your property. So thinking through that, that is quite a bit of downtown, where it's often our naturally occurring affordable housing. So we actively work at a city level to drive down those flood insurance rates as much as we can. So this past fall, Mark, the building official, Brenda, and I worked on the Community Rating System. And each round you go through, you can typically lower by 5%. So this fall, we were able to reduce the flood insurance premium from 15 to 20. So you'll see a lot of information probably going out in like the city newsletter about floodplain information. That's a requirement through community rating, so a lot of it is just letting the community know, hey, this affects us, it's impacting properties. So you'll likely see an increase in floodplain information. That's not directly tied to something that we see coming, but something that we're able to do to lower the flood insurance rate.
My understanding, and I, I don't know if it's still true, but there were some houses in the Carver Bluffs that were in the floodplain where a small piece of their backyard hit the floodplain.
Correct.
And the house itself was nowhere near in danger.
Yes.
Is there any way to, they can alleviate that issue?
So we looked at the floodplain maps related to the bluffs, and they typically, they don't fall within the 100-year floodplain, so it's not outright required for any of them. Several of them have that, because they fall within the 500-year. So there's a pink line that's a little bit more intrusive than the blue line. A lot of Carver Bluff falls within that pink line, so it's an option for them. Several people do carry it, just thinking about Carver, how it sits, and how the river can act.
Is there any impact for any residents along County Road 40 South of this? Oh, yeah, thank you.
Sure. So the only map that was impacted directly were the ones with the arrows, so the lines don't change enough at this point in any other location.
That was kind of my question, does anything change for anybody who's south of that?
Um, I just, did you receive any feedback from the person who's now included in the area?
Sure, so the property owner that is impacted is currently doing a pretty hefty renovation on the property. So our building official has been working with the property owner to say, you're likely going to be impacted, think about relocating some of your mechanical work, so thinking about a water heater on the second floor or a heater in the attic. So we are actively working with the property owner, just to have a good understanding of the type of projects that are being completed. But it's a bummer, it's a bummer to be that one person.
Yeah, I mean, that's significant, you know?
Yeah. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna walk through some changes that are anticipated with the previous ordinance versus the new that we're looking for adoption for tonight. So a change in the purpose, the updated ordinance calls out the National Flood Insurance Compliance. So the previous ordinance didn't speak to it, so I think that became challenging for a lot of people to think, why are we enforcing all of these rules? And it is essentially... And it is essentially to comply with the National Flood Insurance Program, so we can continue to participate, to allow our residents to have flood insurance. Should we choose not to update this ordinance, we would fall out of the program, and suddenly none of the properties would be eligible for flood insurance. So, in a flood event, no property owner would have flood insurance to claim anything against. Something else that's new, those FEMA maps that I just showed, the ordinance fully incorporates those maps, so previously, the maps were not part of the project. It was something that we typically had to figure out with elevation, so while the maps are a little bit tricky to look at, they are helpful, once you can figure out what lines you're looking for, just to get a good idea of the properties that you're looking for. There's an introduction of several new definitions, which is often the crux of many ordinances, when someone asks me a couple times a day, like, what does significant mean? And it's so subjective and challenging. So, this ordinance does have several new definitions that work with the ordinance. Something that's important to Carver, there's also additional language related to historic structures. So, in a city that didn't have a historic district that was prone to flooding, a property owner could only improve their property up to 50% of the market value. So, if your house is worth $200,000, but you have flood insurance, you can only add improvements up to $100,000. So, thinking about the historic downtown, that being our naturally affordable housing, that doesn't apply to historic homes. So, those fall outside of that parameter, so they're able to improve their homes at greater than 50% of the market value, which I think is really helpful to think about some of the properties in Carver and the historic district. Something else that's new and interesting is that conditional use applications are required to be reviewed by the DNR, so they are essentially the keeper of this ordinance. We operate at a local level, but if someone were to come in and request a conditional use permit from the floodplain, it would also need to be reviewed by the DNR. So, again, this is an ordinance that they drafted, that we're required to have for their program, so they're asking for greater review of conditional use permits through the floodplain ordinance.
Ms. Smith, I have another question.
Sure.
Other than the DNR and FEMA, are there other entities that give us input or guidelines?
So, for a floodplain specifically, no. So, those are the two. We control it at a local level, so we'll enforce the ordinance, but then it's FEMA and the DNR that are at the state and federal level.
Thank you.
Sure. clunky in it that doesn't work for us, it would be a typical ordinance process. So, the planning commission would review, hold a public hearing, go to council. So, it very much is something that we are required to have, but something that we could also tailor if we find out issue.
Okay.
I wouldn't say it's something that we're going to update terribly often, just because...
The last one was in the 90s, is that what you said?
Right.
I mean, obviously, when you're doing a comprehensive plan every decade or whatnot, you would think about it. Okay. Are there any concerns about the conditional use aspect of it, the oversight with the DNR?
No, so the conditional uses were a little bit, just some, things that would be a little bit odd and not typical. Something else to think about is the historic district also lays on top of our floodplain ordinance, so anything someone would want to do in the floodplain typically also needs to be reviewed by the Heritage Preservation Commission, so it adds several layers where downtown is probably going to continue to operate the way it does today due to the floodplain and due to the HPC together.
If perchance we upgraded the levy, then what would have to change then is the floodplain?
Right, so the floodplain mapping would need to be redone, correct?
So, who drives that, then?
So, FEMA did these maps.
Right, but how do you get them to do that again?
Yeah, I don't know. Hopefully, the levy certification will go swimmingly, and we can approach that then.
Well, FEMA would probably be involved in the levy upgrade, so it might go along with it.
Yep.
So, that'd be a collaborative.
It would.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. Anybody else?
So, again, one more public hearing is required tonight.
Right, so we will swiftly open the public hearing, which we're really good at at this point. For any public comments regarding the floodplain ordinance? No public comments, we'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the floodplain ordinance amendment.
I'll second to the motion.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, I think we made it through five public hearings and voting, so now we can move on to communications. Any updates, Courtney?
The only thing that I would like to share with you guys is that, as you may or may not be aware, every year, the city of Carver awards an Employee of the Year award, and there are two awards that are given, one for part-time staff and one for full-time staff, and I am very excited to share with you that Brenda Good is the Employee of the Year, full-time staff. I think she's blushing. So, the Employee of the Year Award is awarded to an employee that exemplifies the staff values of integrity, teamwork, empathy, trust, and professionalism, and I believe in the nomination paperwork, one of Brenda's coworkers said of her, she's a great attitude and always accepts whatever task, open, lanky, and willingly. She's always cordial and polite with all of her coworkers and residents. She represents the city of Carver with a kind and caring approach, which I think all of us working with her are not surprised by any of those kind words.
I'll also add that Brenda makes me look good in these meetings, so if I ever look organized, it's often because of Brenda, because I am not.
Yes, congratulations. And the goal was to make you blush, so that worked.
I think that's a little bar, but.
Councilmember Johnson, did they announce who the part-time employee was?
Yes, it's our Fire Marshal, Ryan Gill.
Yay.
Also very, also very well-deserved, his nomination form said, Ryan has always played a key role in several events during 2018. He was the organizer and planner of the Ryan Benefit, raising over $40,000 for member of the Fire Department. He's also managed his role as the Fire Marshal in this role. He's completed several plan reviews and has improved the department involvement in the development process. Ryan also helps with planning and organizing department training, so big kudos to him, too.
Fabulous.
So, we're gonna be recognizing them on the last, during the last council meeting in September, which is Monday, December 17th.
Okay. Are we having a planning commission meeting in December?
Yes, I'm anticipating final plat for Oak Tree Phase Three to be here before the planning commission. Something I want to note, though, is the December Planning Commission is on December 20th, which I don't know if that conflicts with people's holiday scheduling, Christmas falling on a Tuesday. I understand that that weekend might get extended a little bit, so if anyone has a strong inclination to move it up a week to the 13th, I think we could accommodate that, otherwise, we'll be set for the 20th, but if there's a group of you that feels strongly that Christmas should start Thursday night, just let me know.
I cannot attend if we move it to the 13th.
Okay, that's good to know.
I will be out of the country.
Ooh.
I'm good for the 20th.
Okay, that sounds good.
I'm good for the 20th.
Great.
Okay. Anything else? Nope, okay. Make a motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry.
Don't forget.
Jim? He has an announcement, I'm sure.
The 24th is gazebo Christmas.
It's on my calendar.
Good.
Please note that. Okay, should we do over the adjournment? Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you.
You win.
8:09.
Oh.
I'm not even trying to tell them on Friday.